This is giving short flash reading. It's Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022. The chairman of the board, Bruce Malcolm. We want to wish you a great day. We will call it a week. Or words. Or words. Good. I have a motion to excuse your fees. But my. I have a motion to. Start with the mayor's. So. I have a motion to approve the minutes that give away.
I think we have some corrections. I think in one case, I saw a motion of all's name. And I also like the minutes two or three voted. Specifically, he voted. On a campaign.
Certainly.
Pardon?
Certainly.
I'm not talking about the minutes, I'm talking about the minutes. I thought we were talking about a group of events. Minutes. And I asked that the minutes be changed to reflect any vote. The. It happened.
Okay. If I remember right, people did thirty P, thirty minutes, and stuff before. You know, like normal four minutes.
And I would like the minutes to be adjusted.
Okay. Second on what? Second on what? Also. Any further discussions? The move. Question. Can you just make that change? We have a question for.
Yes.
Okay. Before we start, I would like to make a quick. And because of our setup, as to the need to turn this meeting and spark a moving for. Water coverage. Why does it want to move within fifteen minutes further? She's going to say that with her time to transition from this to that. I give the motion that we turn fifteen minutes. Any further discussion? Okay. The move. Okay, we're here to do public comments. May I may I available?
We do, we have the gentleman providing the written public comments. Bruce, do you want to state your public comments to the planning commission? Bruce, would you like to state your public comment?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, would you like to state your public comments to the planning commission?
I'm sorry, I can barely hear anything.
Earlier conversation this afternoon, communicating with the planning.
So this is the public comment written from Bruce Malcolm. Dear members of the planning commission, I would like to comment on the interpretation of Ocean Shore's municipal code, section seventeen point five zero point two one zero. We own four three-unit apartment buildings in Ocean Shore, all of which are one-bedroom units. These apartments are located at eight six three, eight seven one, nine zero seven, and nine zero nine Point Ground Avenue Southwest. And were constructed within the past two years. Each triplex building contains one thousand three hundred thirty-eight square feet or a number of four hundred and forty-six square feet per apartment. We believe these apartments are advantageous in the community, providing relatively affordable housing. Most of our tenants are single and all are happy to have a relatively small, affordable apartment. Our tenants include workers for local businesses, business owners, and executive, and executive schoolteachers, and retail employees. Obtaining open permits for these apartments was a surprisingly long and difficult process, with the building department and the planning department arguing over the meaning of section seventeen point five zero point two one zero. Once the permit had been issued for our buildings, I believe the issue had been settled, but apparently the debate reaches on. I've seen three important questions. One, how has seventeen point five zero point two one zero been historically interpreted? What does the ordinance say? Three, moving forward, what is the best policy for the city? Historical interpretation of the section seventeen point five zero point two one zero D. A quick review of the existing housing stock in Ocean Shore demonstrates that many dwelling units containing less than six hundred fifty square feet of the area on the main floor have been built over years. Example mechanical from the early days of Ocean Shore in nineteen sixties. The period where the city's factors' original intent was presumably most clearly understood. When numerous small condominium units were constructed, C seven five nine Ocean Shore Boulevard North West, constructed in nineteen sixty-one, which was five hundred and two square feet. Also, C seven five seven Ocean Court, constructed in nineteen sixty-three, three hundred fifteen square feet. Through the nineteen seventies, more condominiums were built. C seven six six Ocean Courts, constructed nineteen seventy-seven, four hundred ninety square feet, as well as an introduction of a number of two-story townhouse apartments, which were built with less than six hundred and fifty square feet per unit on the main floor. C six six five Tennesse Avenue Northeast, constructed nineteen seventy. Average main floor area, four hundred forty-eight square feet units. Into the early two thousands, C ten seventeen Braveview Avenue Southwest, constructed two thousand six, average main floor area, four hundred sixty-four square feet per unit. And now, recently, as this year, C six six one Point Ground Avenue Southwest, constructed in two thousand twenty-one, average size, five hundred twenty-five square feet. Based on the existence of these apartments and condominium units, constructed over a period of sixty years, all of which were presumably authorized by permits and in fact continue to function with no apparent enforcement action to this date. It appears clearly that the section seventeen point five zero point two one zero D has not been previously entered into a clue construction of dwelling units smaller than specified in the table in the section. So long as individual unit is part of a structure that meets the area requirements. The claim manager of the section seventeen point five zero point two one zero. A claim reading of section seventeen point five zero point two one zero shows the area requirements in the table applies to the structure containing the dwelling. As opposed to each individual dwelling within the structure. Section seventeen point five zero point two one zero reads, no dwelling shall be permitted on any lot wherein the main floor area of the main structures, exclusively of open porches and garageages, shall be less than the minimum floor space shown in the following schedule, and then refers to a table of square footage. Removing the language and applying correct revision for our lots is boiled down to, quote, no dwelling shall be permitted wherein the main floor area of the main in full structure is less than six hundred and fifty square feet, end quote. Notably, section seventeen point five zero point two one zero refers to the structures, not individual dwelling units. Our triplex are each one thousand three hundred thirty-eight square feet, well in excess of the six hundred and fifty square foot minimum per structure. So clearly, these buildings comply with the language of the section. Ocean Shore City stated objectives. The stated purpose of the R three zone is as follows. Chapter seventeen point two zero, R three zone triplex, seventeen point two zero point zero one zero purpose, quote, this district is intended for moderate density, one, two, and three family dwellings in order to assure adequate light, air, open spaces, privacy, and the protection of property values while providing affordable housing in the community, end quote. Similarly, the identical providing affordable housing language appears in the purpose section of each of the higher density residential zoning chapters, seventeen point two two, seventeen point two four, seventeen point two eight, seventeen point three zero, and seventeen point three two. Moreover, the city's twenty twenty conference of plans specifically addresses the need for affordable housing. Indeed, under chapter four point two Housing Codes and Policies, the city's Housing Policy Eight, which mandates the city encourage and promote a wide range of residential development types and densities in various parts of the city to meet the needs of a diverse population and to provide for a variety of housing choices and to provide housing opportunities, including affordable housing and housing to meet the needs of all community members, end quote. Clearly, demanding that all studios and one-bedroom apartments in the city meet the same minimum size requirements as single-family homes runs counter to the idea of, quote, providing a wide variety of housing choices. Or, quote, to provide housing opportunities to meet the needs of all community members, end quote. Further, chapter four point nine, Action Then, Housing Addresses Minimum Dwelling Unit Sizes, quote, the zoning and subdivision directions should not establish minimum house or dwelling unit sizes beyond those mandated by the building, quote, end quote. While this appears to be a recommendation of the city repeal section seventeen point five zero point two one zero D in its entirety that has not yet occurred. Section seventeen point five zero point two one zero D is an existing law. But to reinterpret that section now for the first time ever has to impose, therefore, uncomplicated restrictions on dwelling sizes within multiple unit structures simply to not be reconciled with city rules as stated in chapter four point nine. While the various multifamily zones have the stated purpose of providing affordable housing in the community, this is much easier said than done. Under current market realities, an owner must achieve rental rates of approximately one point seven, one dollar and seventy-five cents per square foot per month to justify the cost of constructing new apartments. For apartments such as ours on Point Ground, this equates to rent of seven hundred and fifty dollars per month. If we were to build apartments containing six hundred and fifty square feet, we would need to achieve rents in the range of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per month. While those rents might seem affordable to people living in Seattle, they are out of reach of many people seeking housing in Ocean Shore. Similarly, we are proud to have been able to provide relatively affordable housing in Ocean Shore without needing to rely on government subsidies such as low-income housing tax credit. To be subsidized. And we strongly believe the market should be allowed to determine what housing best meets the demands of the community. We plan on developing more multifamily housing in Ocean Shore. It should include a variety of unit sizes ranging from studios through three-bedroom units with a target of approximately three hundred to twelve hundred square feet per unit. As for single-family homes, I see no rational reason that an owner should be prohibited from building five hundred square foot homes on their property if that best suits their needs. Personally, I believe that section seventeen point five zero point two one zero D and E should be repealed in their entirety, best regards, Bruce Malcolm.
Well, we're onto the mayor's. This is something that I heard. I had a co-counsel in there on Friday. And this is something to discuss. The first item, I used to bring it forward, residential building standards council. And he would like to have at least one, if not more, planning commissioners here to talk about how they are decision on that. So, my volunteers, you know?
I, if you happen to. When is it?
Never mind. Oh, okay, so I think it's that's right. Good to have you.
Um, I'm Miss Lilian from public comment. I'm Miss Lilian from public comment.
I wanted to comment on last week's, or the last session with the planning commission and the end result. I've been attending planning commissions since somewhere in previous century. And I have never seen anything like last week. I was at the last meeting. It was apparent, it looked, and I believe that everybody in this room is here for the right purpose. I'm not making any accusations. But it certainly came across as though there had been meetings before the meeting. We come to a meeting and the subject was, I believe, the one camping. And the other one was camping during construction. And suddenly, there's a full-fledged ordinance marked up. Very, very little discussion of what was appeared to be discouraged. And the fact that it didn't match what was on the agenda left me as a bystander going. Now, there was a gentleman, I attended a number of these meetings, so I probably could have guessed that from here. But I will tell you, as someone who showed up at the last time's meeting, I had absolutely no idea where the information came from. And I was dismayed at the results because they didn't match any of the protocols. So somehow, between the writing of the agenda and the meeting itself, and of course, the public, I was telling the public here that the second one of them didn't have access to any of that information. It wasn't in the agenda to have it. And suddenly, our main thrust was providing housing for construction workers. And as a result, and I don't believe that is even an issue, let alone an issue that's coming forward, but once I understood were that we have not enforced the zoning requirements on camping permits. And I understand that, it didn't happen. Now we have someone who's been camping for years on B one lot. And they wanted to be able to have their RV there during construction. Seems like a simple request, seems like a simple answer. But we got off into a situation where what was passed. If I were to sell the lot next to my, my house, and someone decided to build there under what I saw that passed, and which by the way, hasn't been done as far as I'm aware by staff yet. I can have two RVs, both construction people living in our, up to two years. That's not camping. That's a whole different issue. And I, I think it certainly gave the appearance of the avoidance of the therapy of the meetings happening. And I don't think there was any intent to do that. Like you said, I think every year is what's wrong with it and was working toward expediting an issue. I'm just still not sure that the issue asked matched the request that was on the agenda or the agenda. And I guess that's all I can say. I didn't put this in writing. I don't see any management doing that, but I would like, especially as we look at members. And of course, Thor is not exactly new to this. He's been attending planning commission meetings longer than I am. And certainly, he has a criminal amount of history to provide. But it's been a while and things have seemed to loosen up a lot. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Just to let you know, the, what we discussed last week is dead. It's dead. We're not going forward.
I couldn't hear you.
What we talked about last week is dead. We're not going forward to it with it. The mayor, that's the second part of the email that everyone received. And I talked with the mayor last, last Friday. And let me read the last paragraph. Second, is my desire to gain clarification of B one campings in the smaller that we discussed with the planning mission I attended last. I do not have the desire to go beyond that area or to work on workforce housing at this time or to change the city's current rules on RV and tents while constructing a home.
I couldn't hear that.
The bottom of the short is John said that he nailed all of the planning commissioners about an hour before this meeting. He said that I'm not to trust a whole discussion about the type of camping in a commercial zone.
Okay.
But that's a synopsis of it.
So the only thing that we need to address is on B one camping, is that small area, oh, is now a limit. And if we have any recommendations to allow, continue to allow camping there. And we did get a letter from the city attorney. And I think that, that was our last agenda package. And so he, he recommended, I've got the letter here. Said, I research and believe this issue is not reasonable, but rather amending the zoning code to allow camping for only appropriate B ones. We can, we can amend the portion of the zoning code defining permitted and conditionally used in a B one zone wherein camping can be permitted use.
And we could have answered that in five minutes with the last meeting if we hadn't caught inside.
Okay, let's go forward, all, okay?
Okay.
Like this is, at the very least, camping in the B one zone should be a conditional use as opposed to permitted use, and the city staff has set reviews standards to issue the potential use permit for camping. Any comments on this?
Quite honestly, I, I, I couldn't think it's a perfectly simple question. And I think because it's a B one zone, I wouldn't want to just open it up. But I certainly think in the case of a homeowner building a home, which is allowed in the B one district, that we could give them some kind of leeway so they can park on the property during the building process, the same way anyone else would building a home. I don't see it as a big problem.
That, well, that's not, I mean, if you read the mayor's letter, but he doesn't want you to talk about that. So what he wants us to do is focus on that section on Mount Olympus that is only one, that is, acts like it's an apartment. So if you look at that Mount Olympus stretch, which is essentially from Discovery actually to that bridge, the Mount Olympus Bridge to Audi One, there's, other than maybe a triplex, there's nothing commercial there. Now, when you open up B one, in my mind, you open up B one camping, you say, yeah, we should allow it. Imagine what happens when somebody buys the lot next to the Gold, Golden Mercury restaurant, clears it, moves their foot, go in and cancel it for nine days. And is that what we want to have Ocean Shore building? Particularly that part of it.
Richard Dale.
So, as my history, for as long as I've been on the planning commission, when we are presented a, a, a task, I dive in with, with, with both feet. And I generally spend tens of hundreds of hours researching and writing. And oftentimes, I share those documents that I write because I want to try to save other commissioners all of the research that I do. That's what happened in this case. And I made an assumption based on what I heard John say, that he wanted to discuss camping, and I didn't realize that he was talking about that one specific lot. So as soon as John started talking about camping in a B one zone, he's actually talking about camping in a commercial zone. If we're talking about camping in a commercial zone, if we allow one blue-eyed person to camp in a B one zone, that's what, what, what Patty just saying, then we have to allow every blue-eyed person to camp in a commercial zone. I'm using a metaphor here, obviously. And so, so either we allow camping in commercial zones or we don't allow camping in commercial zones. And my interpretation of the mayor's request is he was looking for a way to equitably, fairly, and legally allow someone to camp in B one. So I did a lot of research on code. And, and said, here is a way that we could allow that. Now, the code, in all three, B one, B two, and B three, the code specifically says, I believe it's line E, no camping allowed, period, no understatement. And so the solution on the front of it is no camping is allowed. However, as I have continued to research and talk, I have learned that the people who have been camping on that lot for fifteen years, even though the regulation almost clearly says no camping, what I believe has happened is that the person responsible for issuing that permit could not realize that it was a B one zone, it was a commercial zone. And so, so they issued a permit to camp in the B one zone. So there was no malfeasance involved, there was a, a lapse in, in the administrative procedure. My suggestion, and I understand through John's letter that he's asking for a suggestion, my suggestion, because this person has a fifteen-year history of camping on that lot, that John could equitably and fairly say through an executive order, I can allow this one person to camp on this one lot for the duration of time. He owns this one lot, not transferable to a new owner because that lot has a fifteen-year history. So, so there was no malfeasance, there was no meaning, pre-meaning. It was my propensity to research and share my research. And because we don't have a screen that I can project, I print it out, or I print it out so that I can share it. Because I don't have a screen, as we have in the library. So again, my recommendation to summarize, if the plant, if the planning commission is going to recommend to John an action, I recommend that John do an executive order that allows that one person to camp on that one lot for the duration of his ownership because it has a fifteen-year history of administrative error with the enforcement city code.
Can you agree on the other, the other justice?
I certainly would not condone just opening a business to camping. I, I just think this is a specific case. And there may be something similar in the future, but that's why I'm thinking it's a one-time thing, not a precedent setting thing. And also, to answer your question, Cap, several years ago, we had this huge map, and I may still have a copy of it, where we spent several weeks coloring in the zoning areas and looking at areas that for all practical purposes were residential, but was on multifamily, and I think possibly some business. And I think we need to go back and revisit that as an overall picture and say, if it's acting like residential, maybe we should change it to residential, or if it's acting like it's commercial, take a look at the overall look of the community, specifically the three areas that we've designated for possible rezoning.
Okay. I think we're, in, in the mayor's conversation is when he came to me, he asked us to talk about that one area. I think there were other people that do camp here. Now, there's one that's long-term. But I think there has been other, I, am I right, Marshall? You?
I suspect that is the case. There's enough single-family residences along.
Um, there's enough single-family residences along there that they probably got people coming here and stay there in their RV over the weekend and those type of things.
Yeah, so it, it, what he's asked us to do is not look at the one specific property, look at that stretch. And can, can the, can the code be changed or has something done that we can allow camping in that one stretch? And that's it? Not, not the downtown quarter, not anything else, not anywhere else?
What about, what about a reason of that, for that stretch? About what, a reason was that stretch? Changed it to an R5 or something like that?
Well, that, that's for the attorney, they, they should go do that. And because, uh, I, I just would say, instead, he does not recommend a reason.
I, I think you're gonna have problems if, if it's a business district and I offer a lot, we're trying to, uh, for business purposes and you come in and rezonate, I think it's open enough to camp in ones.
Well, and, and there were lots, there were two lots, I don't know if they're both sold, I don't know one sold. And it was advertised as, uh, uh, could be a negative for that.
So we need to have something there where, where people are given camping permits to make sure they're giving a permit to camp in a permitted area. And, um, I don't think it matters how long somebody's been camping there. If it's, and I'm supposed to, then we all stop it.
Okay. Richard?
I have two opposing opinions. On the one hand, I kind of agree with Eleanor. On the other hand, this guy has been, been camping there for 15 years and the city has set a precedent. If you've been camping there for one year or two years, then I'd say absolutely, the ordinance says no camping, enforcement no camping. But because it has such a lengthy amount of time, uh, continuous years camping, then I think that the, the mayor can fairly and equitably make an exception for that case. If there are other lots that are camping, that have only camped there once or twice, then that, uh, that history doesn't apply. Uh, so I'm in agreement with what I think Patty was suggesting. Either we rezonate so camping is allowed, or we make it a special zone so the camping is allowed. And if we make it a special zone, then they were opening a window that anybody who wants an exception, ask for a special zone. And I don't think that that's a, a, um, a precedent that issues the point. Uh, so, so I'd like to make my suggestion, what I think the mayor should do, but the mayor will make his decision. He's a smart guy.
Marshall? Um, the other thing that I don't know if I missed in the conversation here, that the gentleman that's sitting there for 15 years currently is about to be receiving a building permit, so he's gonna build a single-family residential structure there. So the duration of this executive order could be as short as you'll be allowed to camp possibly so long as your building permit is active and then terminate the camping in that zone altogether.
Yeah.
That would be a very simple, uh...
And can you do a conditional use for that? From there?
It's not listed as a conditional use, so I'm not sure. When I'm seeing any code that would allow that, I don't know how the executive order section of the code, um, would retain this.
He has the authority to give an exception.
Okay.
So that's essentially what he would be, or asking for a recommendation on is, is that exception, you know, worthy of an exception?
Well, the other thing that the, the attorney said, um, if folks want to take their property out of B1, then they would be rezoning their properties in, in a whole different set of issues. In that case, the landlord should approach the city about rezoning their property in a zone that allows camping. So what he said, make the property owners come to the city and say, I want to rezonate.
So that's just one person and there could be six properties in that here?
So?
And ones.
So if, if the city did that, then anybody who built a single-family residence in either a commercial zone or in a multifamily zone can say, I got my property rezoned. And again, that sets precedent, what's the point in having any zoning regulation? Uh, and so I just don't think that that is a feasible solution to the issue. Uh, and I think that, that the mayor has the resources to, to determine how many other properties in that, not only the stretch, have, have campers on it for previous years and how many years they've been camping. Uh, and, and I think that this is a, uh, an issue that goes back to the mayor and, and, and the mayor asked us to talk about it. We've talked about it. The regulation clearly states no camping. Uh, and, and if we make exceptions, uh, then we're opening a door that I think serves no, no valid purpose to the community.
Okay, Thor, do you have any comments? I think there's one person that wants to correct.
Well, there is one person right now that there are, there are campers in that, in that section. And so that's why I asked us to look at that one section. And there is no commercial properties in there other than, uh, triplex or bikes.
Would, would it be beneficial if we looked at this next final, we have a map in front of us and we were given explicit directions so we can go and physically look at the property? I think then we have a better concept of what we're talking about.
Okay. May I have your thoughts?
Yes. Aspects of this specific discussion overlap with the other item on, uh, and, and that's the, the 650 square foot. Uh, uh, I read the, the cuts for the three properties, uh, uh, that were built. One of them was on the Gunnerson Street and two of them on Ocean Shore Boulevard. Um, and in each case, the public comment was, even though this is zone R5 or R7, it is filled up with R1, which is a simple primary residence. Well, a good analogy is if I go and buy cheap property at the end of the runway and now I don't like the noise, so I want the runway to shut down. Well, if you bought that property in a commercial, in a commercial zone or in a high density, uh, or multi-mensity.
Richard, we need to get that track.
We are in track. It is exactly the same issue. So this is exactly for an exception. Uh, and, and, and if you make that exception, you've opened a door that doesn't need to be opened.
I don't think, we haven't, we haven't drawn a conclusion yet, so I'm not sure we can make an exception. And, and we can't keep going off that tangent, so we, we gotta come up with, do we have a thought here? That's how we can do it or not here.
I think that we, um, do what the, the mayor can do. So he could make an exception in this case, um, get that taken care of. Then if we want to look at the map and look at how different areas are zoned and what we may need to change as a future project, so the mayor can get this taken care of, the people can move on with the building, we don't waste any more time. And so I'd like to move that we, uh, express our desire to have the mayor make an executive order on this one property so the folks can go ahead with the building and be on site.
Is that possible?
I think that's the shortest term we can have pulled to that particular person that brought this to the, to the commission as an issue. And, uh, we'll give the, the mayor power to accommodate it, but for a very short period of time, for the one construction of a single-family residential structure within that zone. And then it doesn't become necessary we look at the entire run of lots in there. Uh, simply just make sure that the code enforcement is enforcing the law camping after this guy has booked his single-family residential home there.
Do you have a second?
So I, I second Eleanor's motion again. I second it because I have to do with the question just that this is a one-time deal. And the mayor has the, uh, the, 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 uh, so, so I, so I second Eleanor's, uh, motion that we go back to the mayor and say, you think this preserves a second decision, uh, and executive order, uh, and, and you're right.
Richard, your session? Paul, the bigger? Oh.
I, I would like to see, um, for the purpose of enforcement, uh, that the executive order sunset on the, uh, final completion of, of the job.
So we, we, we'd be maybe, uh, better to go back there and be the chairman first because we could run that through your department.
Well, there's, there's prescribed, um, time limits in existing code. Then maybe just apply that time limit to this gentleman's situation. That would be equitable in my mind.
So we can adjust the law to ensure that, um, have a law motion that said that they, it's within the, the code of time line.
Okay, can the, can the mayor make those kind of decisions? I have a question here for, for one time, Josh.
So he just to clarify, he's doing an exception. An executive order allocated out of time by the city council. He is within his right and power as a mayor to do an exception on the other property. It's, I just want that we clarify that it's an exception, not an executive order from my understanding.
That's all. Okay, so we're taking you out of our line, you've used the chair, the mayor, how do you license exceptions and drink the water? Uh, um, so I'm ready to accept to, to the vote. So I think we need to restate the question. Or do we look at the license?
Um, I hold that we ask the mayor to make an exception.
Et cetera.
An exception with the approval of the county. So, um, have the county in the, in the timer that's, that's fine.
Service in the...
Cancel those out and leave him with it. That holds?
Cancel this, it's the mayor's, mayor's exception. Possibly this is not a default.
I would be all good. My, I'd say, uh, you know, the planning commission recommends to the mayor that he do an executive officer exception to, um, the property on Mount Olympus. That's where I said with those.
That's what you said, wasn't it?
No. You just said executive order, so that's, and that's all that changed.
So, so you said six, seven, search, capture, protect. So, so, and, and Eleanor, if you're willing to admit your motion to, uh, to search, just, I second that motion. Because you are recommending not do that and, and second, um...
Okay, yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, Richard, second? You had enough discussion, Paul, the bigger? Okay, we're gonna do this. And this, this would definitely, um, go Marshall, the mayor, and the mayor's ass. Will you, Marshall, if you wanted, based on your background?
Yeah, so, um, the, the two-page sheet that I handed out, it's got the squares on it here, kind of gives an example of what the table in, uh, chapter 17 dictates as far as, uh, multi-unit structures and, uh, how the square footage would apply to, uh, structure itself as a noun. Uh, currently, we have a developer that is, uh, based on, uh, Ryan Crater, the previous planner's interpretation of that table, is building, uh, triplexes that meet the, the interpreted intent of that table by, as described in the, of, on it, they're, uh, in, in a neighborhood of probably 1,400 square feet. So they meet the minimum square footage of the table. But each individual dwelling unit within that structure does not meet the minimum of the table. And there's, uh, there's dispute or angst over those minimum square footagees. And, and basically, I would like the planning commission to assist in rewriting or clarifying, uh, the language in that section of code. So we don't have to parse words and quote, uh, Ryan's interpretation uses definitions from different places within the municipal code to arrive at his, his interpretation. And, uh, I tried to, uh, basically undo his interpretation, requiring that the dwelling units, uh, meet the minimum square footage of the tables. And I couldn't come back with a, an interpretation that I felt would withstand scrutiny, uh, in a challenge in the public area. So I rescinded my interpretation and let Ryan Crater's interpretation for a couple of years ago stand. I'd like you guys to have the discussion about what the community needs for these smaller type housing, uh, structures. And, and possibly come up with the code that will easily support that without complicated interpretation of the code.
Over.
I don't want to have a problem interpreting if, uh, if the entire building meets the, the square footage that the individual units don't in a multiflex for the very reason he stated he could build them on Friday. But I don't want that to carry on with another area. So I think if we deal with the multi-family dwelling, same with all these, I think it's a pretty easy question. And that if you've got 15 square feet in three units, um, it's not like he feels like a big 1,300 square feet on top of it.
Yeah. What I think was not said here in his letter is he's intent to sell the units as individual units. So if that's the case, that he's gonna take and build the, for example, a lot. Then he wants to unidentify some of the intended individual units, then I think everybody would have a problem.
That's true.
Right, but I think that's the overall.
A structure.
Yeah, it's just a triplex, it's almost an A triplex, camping divided into eight, which is so raw. My thoughts?
My thoughts?
Well, that, that is the plan in some cases, and there's a lot of interest to it by more than just one developer. Uh, and that is a, it's a permitted, uh, provision of the code. It's called the common wall subdivision, section of the code. And that common wall subdivision exists in all of the, uh, higher density, uh, triplexes and higher.
The five-plex and higher, what, what? Five-plex and higher is a common wall, it's in the code.
Uh, I believe it also exists in the, in the triplex.
I know, it's written.
Is that the one, the triplex you mentioned?
Okay.
Anyway, so as you get into the higher density developments, um, that common wall subdivision provision that the code starts to exist, and that plays into this, um, it doesn't change the fact that the overall size of the structure still meets the code. It's now even have an individual owner for each subdivision parcel. And I'm not sure what the best way to handle that, uh, I don't think it will affect all the property. Um, because I think if the, the original reactors of the code knew that you were gonna build a 1,200 square foot overall structure with 400 square foot dwelling, uh, dwelling units, and they also put in the subdivision provisions for those type of things, I brought the whole vision that they assumed that would be okay. Um, otherwise they wouldn't have allowed, or they would have made an exception, uh, for the overall structure size. And they would have all those dwelling units or put a minimum square footage size on the dwelling unit itself, not on the structure. But because they put the overall size requirement on the structure, allowing smaller building, uh, dwelling units, and I believe those are dictated by the building code, um, you know, then it offers up room for interpretation and starting a parse code to either allow or disallow. You could probably make a good argument both ways. You could probably make a good argument both ways, but but the practice has been, and I had three hearings last year that were conducted. Uh where the hearing examiner looked at the codes, you know, the subdivision of three of these. Uh two of them, I believe, were um townhomes, uh three unit townhomes. And and the one on Webster's may have been for its good backdrop of something less. And he also approved the subdivision of two twin homes, which would be a. Uh a duplex that was built under the building code standards of a town, and it's got a firewall.
So yes, so so the question is, how. If what what their provision or what they're using to do it, is that making any impact to city management? By making a four hundred square foot building, making small dwelling units out of it, so there.
Actually, why would it? Packs are structures, square footage um wouldn't change their own, I consider. And and in fact, if you look at the overall code, and you choose to take it as a. A dwelling. Rather than a unit, I mean, I think what. If we were doing a one moving with twelve hundred square feet and it was three different dwellings, as long as it's in case that it's not going to be divided so separately. I I just don't think that there really would any changes need to be made.
Well, I think that's that that's a question for for trying to solve that thought through. Yes, the code allows it to be subdivided and sold individually, provided that they're built as a townhome with a firewall and structurally they can stand alone as their own as their own building.
Well, I would think if they stand alone, then they have to meet the square footage, if it's a collective.
But they have, like on this first page, the four unit example that I have here. Um each of these four units could potentially be four hundred square feet per unit, but the overall of the structure would be sixteen hundred square foot. The code allows you to create four lots in this instance with with one unit on each lot. Under the Commonwealth subdivision provision uh of four hundred square feet.
Okay, that may make sure I understand this, are we talking about four different lots?
No, no, this is this is one lot, this is one lot.
So what it says lot two, lot three, lot four.
If if you were to subdivide this, the way the survey would read is if you were to take this lot, lot number one, this would say one other.
So I have another question now. It it seems like I read somewhere today that there's a minimum lot size. And this would not meet that, so you've got two different problems.
It actually leads to triplexes to minimum lot size, we violate the dwelling unit size. Uh I have a list of code open here on my computer, where I can go through and read it. But if you analyze the definitions uh of a of a dwelling, a dwelling actually means a building. That a dwelling unit is is the the uh the part of that building that a family occupies, as long as it's separated by a continuous firewall. Uh and I spent a lot of time trying to parse and understand uh Marshall's interpretation of of uh two ten. And Paul Crater's interpretation of two ten, and I think that they both have merit. As Eleanor is pointing out, if it is a structure or a building or a dwelling, all three of those three would say they're all for a synonym. And all three apartments are with it, then there's no conflict with code. The conflict comes in that the owner then sells those as three independent structures. And by definition, if you certify a structure, it is as if it is its own standalone building. And now it doesn't meet the six hundred fifty square foot minimum, so what difference does it make, and that's my question, what difference does it make? If it violates the six hundred fifty square feet minimum as part of the total structure applied to the table in two ten that's given. And and I also.
Okay, Richard, here's the problem with that, in all of the individually subdivisions, you would have to subdivide.
Yes.
And a subdivision does not meet the requirement.
It does, it 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 this subdivision meets the the lot size, but it does not meet the dwelling unit size.
So in most cases, or in some cases, which is why they can't do a broad sweep. In a lot of cases, the uh the size of the lot will not allow for subdivision, Rick Martin.
This you're exactly right, and then there are two places in code where you'll find minimum lot sizes. The seventy two hundred square feet is what this lot would start out as, and if you're going to build a single structure on that block, it has to be seventy two hundred square feet. The provisions of the Commonwealth subdivision section of the code allow for these smaller sections to be created less than the seventy two hundred square feet. But only in conjunction with Commonwealth subdivision.
Not subdivided, correct.
They no, they are subdivided, and the and the property line goes right down the middle of that wall. And each individual lot would be less than, it would be seventy two hundred feet or nine thousand square feet or whatever, divided by four, and that's how many square feet you want each one. And it is allowed by code to have something less than that seventy two hundred square feet, but only as it pertains to a subdivision using the Commonwealth. So I see where you're where that would offer some confusion, because one part of the code says, will not create a lot less than seventy two hundred square feet. And then you've got, under the Commonwealth provisions, you can't create a lot less than seventy two hundred square feet, but only in conjunction with a Commonwealth subdivision.
So for example, like nine lots on a big single lot is allowed.
I get it, I get it, I I just think that would.
In some cases, that lot size can go down to like twenty three hundred square feet, so if you have a nine a nine thousand square foot lot, you divide it by twenty three hundred, which would be the minimum subdivided size per Commonwealth. And that will tell you the maximum number of units you could put on that lot and subdivide under the Commonwealth provisions of the code.
You can avoid that particular provision or condition use just by condominiumizing it.
That is true.
You don't need to say support you provision anyway.
That's correct.
So when you condominiumize, then do I own my condominium?
Yeah.
Uh uh and so if I own my condominium, uh and if these triplexes that that uh is it Brian, was that his name?
Bruce.
Bruce Bruce's building, uh if there are condominiums, are is there a difference between a condominium and a penthouse?
No, not there are different types of, one's a structure, one's a method of ownership.
What?
One's a structure, one's a method of ownership.
A something of ownership, I didn't hear that.
A method.
Oh, method of ownership, um so so. The question that I have with group is, why is it okay to build a three dwelling unit penthouse? And rent those three dwelling units, uh why is that any different than building a three dwelling unit penthouse and selling those three individual units? Why is there a difference? In both cases, the actual dwelling unit is, let's call it four hundred square feet, sexy five hundred eighty three or something, whatever is whatever Brian said in his in his letter here. Uh but what's the difference if I if I own it or if I rent it, why does it make a difference to meet the city, to us the planning commission, why does it make a difference?
Isn't it?
It should, and 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 so.
The city's method of doing this Commonwealth subdivision is rather ancient, it it was. How many matters didn't take place in nineteen seventy three, city became incorporated before that, so they kind of made it up. You don't need to do that, it was way complicated, just do condominium, what are you talking to say honestly?
The downside to condominiumizing is you are required to have homeowners association to uh to maintain the the common land that's not held in private ownership.
Well, not necessarily, because you can do you can do no no later condominium results, I've done five of them. And if you put separate water meters, separate electric meters, stuff like that, you don't even need an association except this apartment.
He said except what?
Except this apartment.
Right, so that ties all three of those owners together in an association.
True.
There's an appeal um based on on the proposal that that the rock is too ahead. There's an appeal to somebody owning their own parcel piece of land and not being tied to anybody else, other than the Commonwealth.
It's true.
So what I want to discount is.
You can design a condominium, you can almost exactly that, except for the name of it.
Yeah, I I don't know what the complications is, because I haven't researched that part, but that's probably next on my.
Well, they follow the. Oh, there's a term for this, a shape condominium.
So Marshall, what's the downside to this?
Well, I I don't see a downside, and quite frankly, I don't have a dog in the fight, I don't have a problem with these smaller units being subdivided in individual's owning them. Um because like Richard stated, I really don't see a difference between. An owner owning it and an owner owning all three of them and renting, I mean, it really has the potential to be the same thing either way. And if nothing is said, and we subdivide them, three separate owners don't choose to rent those out as an owner. Uh so you could end up with the three same tenants renting from three different landlords.
Just not privately, it just got to be long term.
Oh yeah, it's long term, unless it's uh if the less it's going to be.
So with that then, if we decided to do that, we would have to rewrite. Uh the code um on sizes.
No, because it's interpreted one way, but it's already improvised.
So we just have to do the interpretation.
You just have to clarify your interpretation.
Well, what can you kind of mix up here between unit size and method of ownership? Method of ownership, there'd be nothing new, as I forget about.
And but it's in code.
Well, yeah, that's true, but that's only for specific use, really talk about how they can target people, right?
That plays into it as well, yes, and and as for the brief that I'm giving, it's kind of from the the dwelling unit sizes.
Is regarding this loophole interpretation two years ago, that was not consistent with any prior use. Or any imaginable, anything that could possibly want. So best way to take care of this whole thing is to eliminate the minimum square footage altogether. No other city in Washington state has that.
I'm not opposed to that.
Or anything.
Oh, I I think.
No other, no other state, if I've seen a new new research check this, no other city in Washington state that identifies for a pressure products. In the building, compared in the zoning code, which affects the size, it's all in the building code, Mike.
Yeah, that's that's what I wanted to point out for a homeowner's benefit is cities typically don't do that, because that minimum building size is dictated by the building codes themselves. So that the zoning ordinance ordinances don't have to address that.
That says the bedroom is the size, the hallways is the size, the bathrooms is the size, so that would make the minimum size of 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 a dwelling is probably like what? Three hundred square feet or something like that. But it unfortunately, they only say they have this crazy regulation, gets in good definitelyness for forty years, makes no sense, so. And it's not supported.
That's it's very common, I don't know about the whole Washington, but I live in many states, it's very common. To have minimum square footage in some areas to keep neighborhoods.
Well, it doesn't succeed.
That that's very specifically seen in our development.
There are covenants, yes, but never in municipal law, it's unsupportable in logic, it's unsupportable logically though. Why would division six have a different amount of square footage than division nine? Who knows? Why would a waterfront lot have a different square footage than a one right to right?
Well, I guess, and it's even more complicated than that, because it's on a mean floor, so.
Yeah.
If you've got four hundred square feet of living on the first floor, four hundred square feet of living on the second floor, you want to build it on the water on division twenty one, you can't.
You can't do it. Most of the houses that tax bills over here, you could not build a half of these in Ocean Choice. Because none of them are man access to eight hundred square feet in the main floor, are they? Yours probably. Well, when when I'm saying a main floor of the two stories you have, right, the skirt does, well, you couldn't build it. Half the house is secret, you could not build here because the minimum square footage was exposed, so it's a law. So what it does is encourages us to cut down almost all the lot to build a house. Design only ugly homes because you you have to stack it unless you want to do it, you kind of need creativity there, and you're easily consumed. Almost a thirty five percent of any lot, and driveway, sidewalks, decks. Uh minus four square feet, whatever you want.
So what is. Okay, I I I need to stop this, because this is under that, talk about minimum square footage of houses. This is this is our debt. And and for what I what I've gotten out of this, and and I agree, I I think I agree with the rest or some of you that. I think it's okay, whether you 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 rent it or you yourself, it's fine. Do we have any more questions?
So so there is a potential slippery slope, and just for for ease of 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 the discussion. If if this triplex uh structure uh had four hundred square foot dwelling units, then we approve it as Ryan interpreted it. So now we have said that a four hundred square foot structure is okay, and that means that a long time for next developer, and he must have put a four hundred square foot single building. And 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 so my question is, how come? Because it has to be. It has to be. Or to a bit full watch. Exactly, so that unit.
Commonwealth.
As the as the unit, I mean, excuse me, the structure. Has got to be a certain size, but then the image itself can be whatever. And 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 I absolutely agree with you, and I was getting sideways to the point, uh uh that existing code already prescribed. For the minimum size of a structure to be uh and how many square foot a lot has to be to to accommodate that structure. And we don't need to change that, that's already already there, there's no reason to change it.
Okay, so then I think all of what I'm hearing is. We just make a determination on on how we interpret um dwelling versus structure, if we say that. The minimum structure has to be this size, that is not all we could.
That's what that's what the table does today, it identifies the overall square footage of the structure. Um the the brief that I'm getting is that that structure, if it doesn't contain dwelling units. Sufficient to meet the intent of the table, then it should be allowed. And 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 that's where the discussion comes to the planning permission.
That's the difference between. Planning and building, building apartment says needs to be this, planning says it's it's that's the the difference in what the page is, right?
Yeah, yes, and I think and I'm guessing it's over the years of.
Yeah.
Of different types of building that have gone back and forth and parsed this. This allowance. And Bruce brings up lots of examples of where they they did build less than the minimum six hundred and fifty square feet, which is the bare room. Um not taken into consideration other uh other uh buildings.
Well, what was their requirement attached by that stat?
So wouldn't it just be how we interpret dwelling, not what you do once? Those.
That was my that was my ask, was was for this body to clearly define the intent of this code, so that it doesn't require a sophisticated interpretation of. And and making a reference to a a building, the dwelling unit. And a structure, because all three of those things have different meanings uh depending on where you apply it.
Why don't we just say that this provision shall not apply to multiple unit buildings containing more than one unit?
Probably still want to have a a minimum square footage for.
Well, because I'm saying multi unit buildings, uh multi multi current, multi floty on all of it.
So I I have to invite everybody to open their gym and face five, and try to make a point. And I'm working down there under the client's interpretation, but what I'm specifically focused on is to exactly quote what the regulation says, seventeen fifty two ten C.
Uh, it said no dwelling and confusion comes because it's easy to confuse dwelling and dwelling unit. And if we simply change no dwelling to say no dwelling structure.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Allow that less than six hundred and fifty square foot dwelling unit inside the allowed dwelling structure. That 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 this table mandates, the table mandates a minimum square foot dwelling structure, a six hundred and fifty square feet for divisions one to none. And and if we just change no gray to say no dwelling structure. Then we are tacitly allowing a dwelling unit to be less than six hundred and fifty square feet.
Well, I think Ryan tried to do that.
And he did.
Well, it looks simple. And what is in bold, uh, he he redefined that uh section D. Part D.
Well, and and I would, I would point out that Ryan's contribution has carried the fall uh for three uh individual use permit carrying during the the last year. And and so the president, he, that that uh not even including all the presidents that shut uh uh that that bridge submitted. And here's the problem coming, he he gave, he gave multiple examples of less than six hundred and fifty square feet over the prior sixty years.
By that sense, that's wrong with that.
That's under here, dear. We have our regulations.
If it was misused in past, is it past?
Well, we're assuming either right, I don't think so.
What's that?
You're assuming this prior, you put it correctly, I don't think you did.
Okay.
What you're calling, well, make it simple, saying this provision shall not apply to multiple unit buildings. So to the integration units of volume and everything. Okay.
I think we're just defining dwelling, dwelling units.
Well, this is three terms dwelling, dwelling unit and structure and and we need to tie this in together with the. The the common wall subdivision provisions to make sure that. That whatever we decide or whatever we decide as a planning permission is an acceptable minimum sized dwelling unit, whether we. Uh, whether you use the building code or this table. Um, that those dwelling units would be allowed to be subdivided and occupy a parcel on their own. As a part of this larger structure or subdivision that provided that it's a common wall subdivision. I I like the idea of allowing the building code to define the minimums, but but I sense that that's not a. A uniform thought to the entire group, um, I don't know if you guys want to think of that or not.
I think so too. I have like, I want to clarify that because I'm not sure.
Well, the if if you use, if you eliminate this table and just say the building, the building codes shall dictate minimum structure size or or uh. Dwelling size. Then you could get all the way down to using the minimums of the building code, I I I think you're down under. Under three hundred, maybe close to three hundred square feet is what you could get down to and meet the building code requirements for a for a single dwelling.
I think it's two twenty.
What, three twenty? Okay.
I I I don't know why you're.
So that if you, yeah, and that, so it starts looking like a tiny home and and I know talking to several different groups of people in Ocean Shore's. Some people are adamantly opposed and some people think it's a great idea. You don't want anybody to cut any trees now, but who want to put a big house in the middle of a lot, we have to cut trees now. I mean, that's the, you can, you can argue that point both ways, do you want more natural area and smaller homes? Or do you want larger homes and and manicured natural areas?
Well, no, we already have provisions for tiny homes, that's how they don't call them that, they're called studio apartments. They're called accessory dwelling units, also it's different days.
Right, but but this table applies to the R one zone as well, so when we eliminate that table, then you could end up with a a s- a home size that's defined by a building codes.
You're just going to every other skipping Washington state does.
I I realize that.
Okay.
Um, and and I'm not, I'm I'm not providing arguments for or against that, that's your guys' job to deliberate. And decide what's best for the community, whether you want to have smaller dwellings in the community than what's what's tried by this table or not.
Well, it'd be smaller than main floor, I mean, you still took story and have a solid square feet, one.
Are we getting away from the question when we talk about square footage on other areas? And do we need to define this question?
We're not, if if part of the consideration is still in the minimum square footage. So, um, so it really is part of the bigger conversation to have that, but. But, you know, for the all intents and purposes for this, I think we all agree that we don't really care that this is. Uh, it would be so loud, um, or if it's a random.
I only care that what zone it's in and if it's in a zone where this is allowed, I don't have a problem.
Well, the question is why?
I have a hand to hold. Common structure, square footage device for the entire structure. Whether the conjoint structure.
Yeah, but so I think the first thing we have to do is this. As a group, agree that, yeah, this isn't the matter. This is the. This meaning of what he's proposed to do here isn't the matter. So I think as a group, we agree on that.
So let let me make sure because earlier in this discussion, Eleanor said that she did not want to subdivide uh.
No, I questioned the subdivision.
Okay. And and so what I think that everybody is agreeing on is that the only thing that the size of the dwelling units inside the building. Are irrelevant as long as the building needs this table. And it doesn't matter whether I'm going to whip those dwelling units or whether I'm going to sell those dwelling units as individual structure, they're still inside the same building. All right, and if, are we all in agreement for that?
Yeah, I think there is code, building code that does specify that the units have to be at least certain size.
That's dictated by the building code, yes.
Yeah.
If not, we'll change channels and it kind of may may.
So the question, the real question is how do we rewrite that one small section? Do we, do we, is what uh Brian did uh acceptable or do we need to take what he did here and re? Reword it and put it in, make a recommendation seventeen fifty ten uh D. That's, that's the one that is upper interpretation.
So then Marshall, with your opinion, how would you like to see that? How would you like to hear me do on that?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if what Richard said, uh, adopt, so the the table refers to a dwelling.
That's correct.
Is it dwelling, dwelling structure and the same thing? Dwelling structure and building all in the same thing.
Well, I think the the question is not, that's open to interpretation, is it not?
Well, it's.
The climate of the code.
It's, it's, there, there are definitions in here that that talk about the dwelling, where where they start mixing. Or parsing the interpretations, this way you refer to it as a dwelling structure or a dwelling unit. And I'm wondering if we refer to the application of this table to a dwelling structure.
Yeah.
Not like. Then that may eliminate the thought that this should apply to a, because a dwelling is a, is a use, is that correct? Use of the term, term?
I hope.
Dwelling, a dwelling unit and dwelling are uses.
The definitions are all of them, they're conflicting on the other, in various parts of the code, that's why we wouldn't want to mess with them, because I don't know what they're intended to imply. You, you, we can play structure, dwelling, dwelling unit, all of them are in various parts of the code here.
Yeah, but but when you talk about a dwelling unit, that's when you start talking about the compartment inside the structure, the rural structure.
I wouldn't mess with that, just exclude, exclude what you don't want to cover. Don't worry about the definition, pick as ordinary as.
I was here five, six, seven, seventeen thousand four, as, I don't know, two hundred and ten.
So, so your proposal is to exclude multi-unit structures from the requirements of the table?
Yeah.
And just have to be careful.
Let's, let's, let's that out and see if that works, what are the downsides to that?
So I think there's so much content along, really, when they wrote this nineteen seventy three.
If you were to rewrite this paragraph above this table, what would you have to say? Because I'm confused.
I eliminate the minimum square footage, it takes several problems.
I I don't, I don't understand it, so if you eliminate the minimum square footage, uh, then I could build a three hundred and twenty square foot dwelling.
Exactly.
May so. And I, I'm totally right.
Yeah, that's, so, so that's the extreme. And and that's where I think there's subdivision in the group is, you know, Thorn would would find that acceptable, um, you know, somebody else probably does. So, so taking, if if you take that off the table, what other language change does simply excluding multi-unit structures? From that, in in that paragraph? Exclusive of open porches and garages shall be less than the minimum floor, uh, this paragraph shall not be applied to multi-unit structures?
Yeah. Multi dwelling unit structures.
If that's what you're trying to do, yeah.
I just wanted to be clear so that when the argument comes up, I can say, listen, this is clear, you don't have to use. All of these different definitions to use this one from one part of the code to apply it to here, this one from another part of the code to apply it here, to get your, your desired outcome. I would like the, the outcome uh to not be able to be parsed.
So I I propose, I'm still trying to think, this actually need to write it down, make it clear, but if it's, if this says no dwelling structure. Shall be permitted on any block within the main floor area of the main structure, exclusive of open porches and garages. Shall be less than the minimum floor space showing to the following schedule. And then it go, then I would suggest it goes on to say, if there are multiple dwelling units inside the dwelling structure. As long as the dwelling structure adheres to this table, it's okay. Does that make sense?
It, it does, but it seems a little wordy.
It is a little wordy, if you clean that.
If we just stated no dwelling structure. Then people couldn't imply that that dwelling was referring to dwelling units.
Right, and and so.
So is that the simplest thing? And and would you all understand that if I said no dwelling structure shall be permitted? Or or could you still misinterpret that as thinking dwelling unit? If we, if we added dwelling structure as as opposed to just dwelling on its own?
Could you put dwelling structure and then for instance, common law of of something that could clarify on?
Well, we already used the term dwelling unit, which is pretty descriptive, define well.
Well, structure means anything built directly to the ground or below ground, fixed to the ground.
Now, structure is so broad, you have to, you have to plan.
Yeah, so a dwelling structure.
A dwelling structure seems to do that.
I don't agree with that.
I don't care with that.
That, that seems to me to be the the keenest and simplest, I'm still trying to wrap my head around what Thorn is saying. And and I, I, I can't quite visualize it, so, so I need to hear a bit more, uh, so that, so that the light goes on, uh, because sometimes.
But not too bright. But not too bright.
Why do you say this? The provision of the minimum square footage rules shall not, not apply to dwelling units with a multiple and multifamily dwelling buildings.
I would rather define the structure than talk about square footage. That we're talking about the structure and I don't want to get into square footage.
Structure, culture, test your comments, Marshall done, maybe else on this one.
That, that's why I think, and I don't. I know we want to make progress on this, but I don't expect that this be done tonight, if we still feel like it's a slippery slope that we're going to end up down. And 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 that would be one of those slippery slopes, if we redefine this and don't clearly state that it's for the purpose of a residential dwelling. We don't want this applying to um to commercial dwellings or to garages or hot buildings or whatever else.
Well, by this way, the digit number, the time it does that.
Sorry. So, so I'm gonna. I would like to change direction for just a little bit, uh, um, and if you go to page eight of the agenda. Even the one, three, three, even the fourth paragraph, uh, Marshall underlined a section of that paragraph. Well, so, and. You better hurry up or you'll be yourself. It's in the point that I want to make is that sentence has three clauses separated by commas. And the sentence is so clumsy, I would say that if he made it into a comma, why is that? Question asked, and he wanted to pause the sentence, is there a, you know, uh, uh. As long as there's continuous fireproof wall from large accomplice of a roof, it was a separate. dwelling structure.
Yeah.
Uh, this, this is a very clumsy, dirty sentence, and it's part of what we went to refine this code. Uh, that I, that sense could also be figured out, uh, I, I may have figured it out, and I'm moving to that note. Now, I don't know if I just didn't bring that note with me, um. But does, does anybody else agree that that sense? That the code will benefit that sentence is figured out?
That sense was contained in a definition or building?
Yes. Um.
That's an article?
Yes, it is. It's either in article or in a building code, is it right?
Well, I think it's important when you're considering putting more than one building. On a property zone lot. Let's say you have a multifamily five or six place lot, you know, put two, two, three year building though. Got to make it useful there. Okay, I think all we can do is. Study this a little bit more. I think we've had enough interpretation here. Well, the whole idea, I mean, since this is kind of being repetitive on a round circle. Like the between um. Partial divides interpretations and all discussed, and I think all pretty good there. That uh, blue, there's separation by territory, what size of units are, or. So a lot, that is. But we do need, we, we do need to fix uh section D seventeen fifty two ten. That's for our heated, it's on the third.
So there, I'm asking, did the addition of the instant dwelling structures go well? And and does that fix that table if everybody's on?
Well, that's what I've been saying, we can agree on that.
Okay.
Can I finish? I don't, is there a way to make that decision?
I think structure is not going to.
They said no.
Hold on, I can check that out.
Yeah, let's go back, take another look, it could be that, just as a, you know, wrong structure, so you didn't let you block.
Now, if we combine square footage, things not simple.
We don't have a definition of college structure.
So then we.
Well, I wondered if we're using the correct word that would require um to do another, either interpretation or another definition.
Okay. The definition of a, of a building is such, two blocks. Definition of a building is. A building means a structure animal, sheltered, hiding, or enclosed of the universal animal or shadow. When heat washes, since I got it, when heat washes, air wells, completely separated from any other portion of the mission, division or firewall. The back of the thing of the road or the road of their end, which will extend to the ground with the capricious, so the direction of points. Then each next portion shall be included in that building. And that's a minimum of seventy five, that, that definition can be reworded, but make it much more clear. And then if, as I said in the first section, if we said dwelling building. And and here the definition building, that's two minor changes to the code, which are survival solace mission. We, we, then struggle in this case, if you read.
Yeah, I, I too, I could well, uh. Oh, the take a look at it and see how we each interpret it, because I don't have some more thoughts.
There is one.
Yeah, so if you read this. We'll leave it there. Right, then if you read, read that, if it does have a firewall, and it goes all the way up.
It's definitely the case, it's a structure.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So then there's need is.
That's an argument that I'm running into.
And so, so right, right, as there's a dwelling structure, it would say, it would say, but building. I read by building. So.
And who will stand there and.
I, so, and then, right, that, that test has to take out of hand as well. Uh, so, so if you read what's in red, does that hurt to find building? And then if you start, well, building.
Yeah, okay, we, we all need to, that, that's this. And come back that time with a representation. Like verification to. Have thoughts straight and, and if you guys want to send anything, I can send it out to the group, so. What decision? Yep. Uh, because we've, we've got another issue that we need to talk about. Uh, after, still. This place over. Uh, this place over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we can't have a jury.
As if you don't believe.
Yeah.
That, that, this.
I mean, one.
Good for you.
I mean, there, what about the least announced there, isn't there?
Um, so the convention center, uh, you can't, we have to pay, then, yeah, so, even the city, like we say. We pay you through the convention center.
You don't know if it's a city yield.
Yeah. It's part of that level of facilities, they have. You use the line.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. I, I just assumed the two for the last, what is it, two?
Two meetings.
Yeah, two meetings.
You know, a few years ago, we met, uh, in the fire station area, and even from, is the size of that possible?
So because of like COVID and stuff, they're trying not to do any of the like extra meetings that don't involve like the fire department staff. Um, just to kind of curb the traffic through there.
So. I, if they have paid for that, it's this, probably, but we might be able to remember here.
Or I would, the, the other option is, um. Just doing it as a special meeting and doing it as a different day to see if, uh, and they'll, they'll get the library.
Okay.
Do you want, want me to check on that first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, check on, I don't know, my memory from a couple of years ago, is that they've got all their equipment set up and even though they did not meet all five days. They don't want to carry down all the equipment, but check on and see if that's possible. I already opened, I took a thank you for everything, that is the library.
Well, I do a meeting almost every day, a hundred, so it's, I would, I, obviously, we can do a different day, just to. Stay out of zoom, and I'll be back with it.
Who would like to go speak, want to be asked, asked, yeah.
Well, I'll check with the library if we can get that, it's not a big deal, we do two, two special meeting on a different day, calling it, and then we're back with the library and.
We think that would be, well, uh, just, we think that would be used, so we have, I think, all the. But here, here, I think there is a certain.
Okay.
But I'll confirm it.
Okay. That over here is, uh, this is. Okay.
They can essentially involve comments, so I believe they will.
All right, all right.
Oh, and that's it, would be awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so, so down to. Okay. Building, we decided to give it a little structure, dwelling, so summary of the point. He was a instructor this ago. Okay, just, just to clarify some, something on my example, the second page of this, um, thing that I, that I distribute each day. Were things that I would, I would think I would not permit under current code. The top one was a common wall subdivision with a standalone building here. I don't believe that makes the spirit of, of the common wall subdivision as a single. And again, on the same thing on the bottom, if you got two twin homes and you weren't subdividing along the, uh, the common wall, then I go, I mean, this makes it spirit of the common. So with the two examples on the second sheet were things that I didn't believe we should entertain, cast acceptance.
Okay, so, have, have a little computer, we'll be here next time, okay, at the eighth part of this. Um. I will take the minutes that's needed. And then the next, I'm gonna go back to the, the case, and then before we take one spot. And our new, uh, new, pardon, yeah, to the previous, there are new person who work for. Be here next week.